I'd like to call the January 20th, 2015 meeting of the Save the Board of Education. Mr. Board Secretary, has this meeting been advertised according to the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, it has, Mr. Mackinon.
Okay, could everybody please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A roll call, please.
Mr. Balka.
Here.
Mrs. Backo.
Here.
Mrs. Blum.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Sayak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
And Mr. Mackinon.
President, you have something, resolution to read to go into closing?
Motion to go into executive.
Do you need a second?
Second.
Mrs. Blum.
Yep.
Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter 231 PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Barrow, Saville, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows: The public shall be excluded from discussion of any action upon the herein after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: Personnel matters, including but not limited to agenda items, attorney-client privilege, various legal issues associated with the Saville Wall Memorial High School football program. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public as such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Mr. Balka.
Yes.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mrs. Blum.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Sayak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon.
Yes, the board will retire in the 2015. Everybody please stand and join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Board Secretary, has this meeting been noticed according to the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, it has, Mr. Secretary.
Very good, how about a roll call?
Mr. Balka.
Here.
Mrs. Backo.
Here.
Mrs. Blum.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Sayak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
And Mr. Mackinon.
President, could you just go over the executive agenda?
This evening in executive session, the Board of Education discussed two items: Personnel matters, including but not limited to agenda items, and under attorney-client privilege, various legal issues associated with the Saville Wall Memorial High School football program.
Okay, Dr. Labby, we have a couple of presentations to see.
Yes, Doc, we have two budget presentations for you, as well as our Vision 2030 finance and infrastructure.
Did you get your plan presentation?
Before we get to the budget presentation, just want to review quickly our budget calendar. As you can see by the calendar, today we are going to hear our administrators from the high school and middle school propose to you their 2015-16 discretionary instructional supply of budgets. February 1st, we are hoping to provide the Board of Education with a preliminary budget. And on February 3rd, Dr. Shettyack and Mr. Blockalloy will give presentations on the curriculum construction and technology budgets. Leading to tonight's budget presentations, I mentioned this the other evening before our elementary school principals gave their presentations, I really do feel blessed being in a district with such high polished, knowledgeable, and inspiring leaders. And the two principals they're going to speak to tonight, of course, they have their administrative teams with them, are of the finest that I've ever worked with. I've worked in four districts, and these two individuals, each and every day that I have the privilege to work with them, I feel that I come away with more just by working with them. The amount that I learned from the two of them in the short amount of time that I've had to work with them has just been incredible, and I'm forever grateful to the two of them. Mr. Brown is going to lead things off with his presentation on the high school budget, and then Mrs. Jakubic is going to give her presentation on the middle school budget. So without any further delay, Mr. Brown.
Thanks, Dr. Labby. Thank you for those kind words. Tonight, as Dr. Labby said, my name is Jim Brown, I'm the principal of the high school. The budget is a fairly simple document, and I think you'll see, as we get through it, you'll see it was very, I think, very nicely done by our supervisory staff and our administrators at the high school. Just the process, very simply, is it's done from the ground up. This year we started with a zero-based budget. The teachers were asked what they needed, teachers went to their supervisors, worked in departments, and then I met with each supervisor to develop a budget that we moved forward. Obviously, the budget is formulated with all areas of the school in mind. One of the things that I don't have direct responsibility for is the athletic budgets, that's done under separate headings, but all of the academic budgets are done through my office. This is probably the meat and potatoes of our budget, and it's the proposal for new staff. You'll see a couple of items on there, and I'd like to explain each one. First, the physical education staff. We're working with numbers of between 35 and 45 kids in a PE class. And it's not so bad in a PE class, but when we move to the academic area in the health room, it becomes 35 or 45 in a health room, and it's just not a good, it's not a good situation. So I've asked for an additional staff member there. The second part of that is the adapted phys ed piece. We have, and will have, three multiply disabled classes at the high school management, and looking to take on more. Our kids do exceptionally well here, and part of that process requires that they get something additional in physical education. They need, they need an adapted program, okay? So they, although they may be integrated in our regular phys ed program, besides the OT that they get, they actually need an adapted program to suit their individual needs. And we really need a staff member in order to do that. Now, we can take a staff member that exists and move him or her over to the adapted program, but then we need to backfill that position. So that's why I'm requesting an adapted position. The next is a new program, the physical education and dance. One of the things that I've been trying to do here over the past five years is promote a dance program at the high school. In lieu of their regular or traditional phys ed, I believe that the kids here would do exceptionally well with a dance component as an elective for their physical education classes. So we could go out and hire a phys ed teacher with a dance certification and have a program, and build into a full-time position, because we do have enough kids that would build into a full-time dance program. We have the space, we have an allocation in the fitness center, there's a dance floor there that's not used for dance, really, most of the times it's used for phys ed and the fitness component in our gym classes or our phys ed classes. Social studies. Social studies, on average, 27 to 29 kids in a class. Language arts is around 21, 22, math is around 21, 22, they are ideal conditions. Social studies has ballooned up, or has been ballooning up, since the advent of the economics program, where we've had to get economics in. We have basically surrendered a full-time teacher to the economics program, ensuring that everybody gets that graduation warrant. So we really do need that body in social studies to level out our numbers. Last year, we added government, was it government? Government civics as an additional course, and we'd like to even continue to explore more, but you need the bodies. We can't take them away from the prerequisites or foundation courses. Special education, our special education numbers has been growing. It's, make sure I put two. Two classes. As I said, we're going to be expanding the MD program, and we are expanding all of our special education programs. We just need the kids to just come in, they need services, and we need the body. We are limited to the number of students that can be put in a classroom, and we just need the extra body. The last one I am extremely proud of, that it finally comes to fruition, or hopefully it will come to fruition, five years ago, we put in an application for junior ROTC program here at the high school. I remember when we built the addition, we had a couple of colonels or captains or whoever they were come in, and I showed them around the building, we looked at space, we looked at allocation, we looked at students, and they approved us for the program. That's when the big bust hit, and the government really closed down all new programs, and not until just this year, right around, probably a month ago, I started hearing rumblings that we would be on the list. Mr. Mackinon and I spoke, and Dr. Labby spoke about it a month ago, maybe three weeks ago, and we are expecting a letter within two weeks or so to get us that ROTC program. And it's great, because it'll coincide with our STEM initiative here at Saville, and it will be in the area of Air Force, so it's aeronautics is the topic that they will cover. So I think it'll fit in extremely well. Yeah. Oh, and psychology, I'm sorry. Another one of the programs that I've been talking about running here is an additional program for the past couple years, has been, we haven't had an opportunity to fill all the requests for psychology that we've yet to go to. With this position that I am asking for, I have, I met with an individual not too long ago, who's actually got a master's in psychology and criminal justice. She teaches at Middlesex right now. If we were to expand that position of psychology here, add the criminal justice strand, we could actually expand our college offerings to 15 here at the high school for middlesex, which would give a student here the ability to take one full semester of college courses here at the high school. We have the areas in language arts, math, science, history, business, and now with potential for this one. This would give somebody an opportunity to take a full 15 credits. Even at a state college, that could be a $12,000, $13,000 savings for a parent if they're going to a state college, if they were interested in any of those areas. So the psychology, criminal justice strand, I think would be a valuable one to our students. Again, we do have many, 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 many kids who go on to study criminal justice in school when they graduate, and I think they would buy into it here. So you're looking at two phys ed, criminal justice, psychology position, a social studies position, two special ed, and the ROTC program. All, I think, giving us just another reach further into some advanced level courses, some real positive courses for the kids in this community, and some positive, just positive stuff for them to take. Next item, it's just strictly numbers, strictly numbers. On the board, I did take the opportunity, or I made you a copy of my worksheet, and you'll see areas of a clean service, like area 261, 420, and 31 is up about $9,000. The rationale behind that, it is an increase, the rationale behind that is we have cameras, our video cameras around the building are generally, we need to replace two or three cameras a year. The service on those are expensive, the service on our phones is expensive, and in that budget line item includes instrument repair, general repair in our IA home net, automotive shops, and so those costs have all gone up, looking at about $9,000 increase. The next big area is general supply, you see it's up $100,000. Now, as bad as that $100,000 looks, it's fairly easily explained. That with the math supervisor and his initiative to provide a calculator for every student in the school is going to cost us $69,000. I'd say whether we do, we don't, or how we get to it, all in one shot, buy our way in over three years, he asked me to move it forward as an initiative for the school, it would cost us $69,000 just for calculators and batteries. So it's a big nut. The rest of the increase is about, is about 4 percent, I mean, it's not a significant increase over the cost of, over the cost of a year. Textbooks is the other big item we're up, and again, mathematics keys into something like that, where the math adoption that we're looking for at the high school came in at $131,000. All right, so if we want the whole math series to be entire school, that's what it would cost us. Are there other ways to implement? I'm sure we can find another way, but that is the initial request at $131. Another $31,000 is the, there are four new AP books or textbooks that we're going to require, they're at about $31,000. If you move to the next page and then go down to the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see a total balance of up $200,000. I think when you look at the fact that we're up $131 for the math series and another 70 for the calculators, there's our 200, we're basically at a wash from last year, when it's all said and done. Pretty simple stuff. Questions?
Any questions from the board, Mr. Sayak? A couple of questions. The AP series, is history included as part of the textbook?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
As in our fact, Mr. Jet Teal said you had spoken, and that was included.
Excellent. Could you give us some background? I don't know if it would be you or Dr. Treppisano, but the math program, the calculators, the books, where are we going with that? What's?
I think he would be better suited to do that, Kevin. I mean, other than adding the program in and supporting his vision, I didn't take it apart, I didn't look at all of it with him.
Okay. Dr. Labby, will the math supervisor be coming before us, or how do you want to get us that information?
Dr. Shettyack will represent the math supervisor.
Yeah, that was, I'm sure that's true.
Sure, Mr. Treppisano will be here in attendance, but Dr. Shettyack will be giving that presentation.
Okay. And my final question is, with regard to the high school strategic plan, we're in year two, what elements of this budget are specifically attributable to the strategic plan, and how is the strategic plan committee involved in the development of this budget?
The planning's a big, Kevin, we have two or three people that sit with the regular link, and they are, they have had input into the budget. How it reflects, I'm going to say not specifically, but the growth, all the growth of the programming has all been endorsed by those folks.
Okay, is the initial committee still intact that formed the plan last year?
No, we have a, what did I, what's the, the skip committee, we're using the skip committee with, as, no, we had a separate name for it. The circuitry evaluation furtherance committee, okay? The skip committee has adopted some of those functions, but we call it the furtherance, the furtherance committee, okay? There's two or three members still.
Okay. Any other board questions?
Yes, Lou?
Hi, you know what I'm going to ask you, don't you?
No.
Exactly under which line item do art supplies fall?
General supply.
Okay, has that budget increased?
Increased by about $8,000.
Great, okay, thank you so much, glad to hear it.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, and Mrs. Jakubik is making her way up for the middle school presentation. She'll also be discussing the goals that she and her faculty have identified for the middle school.
When you take a look at the Saville Middle School budget considerations, if you attended the elementary presentation, our goals are pretty much, very much the same, okay? It's just that they're at a different developmental level, different levels of learning, and different levels of development. So while the language is the same, the activities and things of that nature are a little bit different. Andrew, you're working this one, aren't you? Oh, I'm working this one? Oh, okay. All righty, well, now that we've narrowed that down, go ahead to the next one. My colleague, Mr. Brown, explained the budget development process very well, so I'm not going to bore you with those details. Both the high school and the middle school developed their budget a very similar way with input from the supervisors, and then the building principal with the vice principals put it all together, and also input from the skip committee. So the first one that we have is the middle school supplies and materials, okay? And as you can see, in the 2014-2015 budget, we were at $92,040, and for the 15-16 budget, we're looking at a decrease of $6,276, mostly because we're able to decrease some of the consumables that we use as a result of all the new technology that we have. One of the pieces on the Google Chromebooks, we have about 740 of them at the middle school, there's something called Padlet in the Chromebook, so a lot of the materials where we are still using periodicals, we are able to pull it off the Chromebooks, so that enabled us to do this. In this account, this is where the middle school supervisors really came into play with providing their input there, also specifically language arts and math, in terms of some of the new initiatives that have gone on, not really new, Writer's Workshop has now been around for the past two years at the middle school, really went into full swing last year, but also we need to replenish those supplies, so that's a big portion of that budget. As Mr. Brown was talking about, the piece about the calculators for the high school, we also need to update our calculators at the middle school that are required for the Common Core. So again, looking to have all students at the middle school with the one-to-one calculator component or class sets of that, and then the batteries that they need since they're utilized that often. I guess honor the days of the solar calculator with everything that they do, so that's a big component of the budget. Also, the music department with the copyright-protected sheet music, music equipment, things of that nature, as well as art supplies, which I left out the word art, but, and then the general school supplies that we require, folders, composition books, things of that nature, and as well as student desk replacement. We try and do at least two classrooms of desks per year, we weren't able to do it last year, we'd like to do it this year. Many of our desks are from the inception of the middle school in 1967, so, and desks are quite expensive, so we look to do at least two classrooms a year, and we look to do things a little bit differently, they call them the one-armed bandits with the big desk in front of you, but now with the problem-based learning and things like that, sometimes we're now replacing it with tables and chairs, and it depends on what type of classroom that it is. So we're looking to do that again next year to replace some of the chairs. Next slide. Going to middle school textbooks. We're also going down by about $24,325 on the textbooks. We did a big math initiative this year, so we spent quite a bit of money on math textbooks, I think close to $100,000. Now we just need to enhance that a bit. When we're looking at, to increase the rigor, we're looking at to include more advanced math classes, and in doing so, we need additional textbooks to support that program. So that is one piece, but again, it is less than what was previously budgeted for this year when we did quite almost all of the math series, okay? Language arts literacy, the eighth grade curriculum was rewritten over the summer, and now we're moving into rewriting the sixth and seventh grade curriculum, which means we do need significantly more novels, new novels, novels that are authentic to what our kids are experiencing in their daily lives, as well as with Common Core, that you need to pair novels together, pair texts, and the kids are comparing and contrasting, as well as taking the core text that they have and then doing supplemental materials from there, a lot of which can be taken from that Padlet that we talked about on the Google Chromebook, but we also need periodicals, nonfiction articles, and everything else to, for our kids to be able to be competitive in a global society, going along with Vision 2030. So one of the goals, and again, the elementary school, when they presented, and it's also the same goal that we have at the middle school, all students are prepared for college and career readiness. When parents hear that, they sometimes get really concerned, and start to saying, oh, my young child, you're talking about, they're going to be doing college work now. No, it's about preparing the kids of where they are today, so that they have all the options available to them as they get older. So it is developmental, it needs to be, you're not going to throw a college textbook in front of a sixth grader, you're not going to throw calculus to a sixth grader, but you are going to give them the skills that they need to build upon, so that when they get to high school, they are able to be competitive, when they get to post-secondary education, whether it's college or trade school, they have the knowledge to be able to apply what they learned here. And our focus needs to be student learning, that's why the piece needs to be about quality textbooks, things that are, you know, you say history doesn't change much. Well, history may not change, but the dynamics of how you're teaching history and how you're doing thematic units makes a big difference, okay? So that's one of our biggest pieces there. And for science and social studies, we recently replaced those textbooks, now we just have to accommodate for shifting enrollment. The seventh grade happens to be our largest class by about 70 kids, more than any other grade level. They surprised us when they were sixth graders, they just kept registering, registering, registering. They stuck around, so they're in the seventh grade, next year they'll be eighth graders, so we do need to keep up with their pace in terms of doing this, providing for them textbook-wise. All right, Angel, next slide. Middle school administrative supplies. Went down by close to $4,000. One of the pieces was some of the technology budget moved into the technology range of things, but when people see administrative supplies, they think I'm buying office furniture that we need, $15,000 worth of office furniture. No, what comes out of this account are diplomas, diploma covers. Every child in the state of New Jersey before they graduate, when they graduate from the eighth grade, gets the United States Constitution, that's in our, that's in New Jersey law, and it's got to be a bound book. So that's a really large chunk of the money of the $15,000 of where that goes, okay? And the rest is office supplies, envelopes, postage, you know, copy paper, things like that. Okay, next slide. Middle school other objects. This is a big account. This has to do with the co-curricular experience at the middle school. It's such a key component to learning and a key component of preparing our kids for global functioning. Within that is the middle school recognition program supplies. The first slide that you saw that came up was a picture of one of our lockers with a middle school pennant on it, where kids get different stickers to really sum up their middle school experience. It's a big piece. You wouldn't think that sixth, seventh, and eighth graders would like to get stickers, okay? It's a big deal. It really, really is, and they get to show it on the front of their locker. Could you go back to the first slide? They get to show it on the front of their locker, and they earn it through there. So it's not just for your straight A student. Yes, we have a sticker that says, I made the honor roll, okay, whether it's A or AB. We also have a sticker for most improved student, which this particular child, who I don't know who has that locker, but that particular child, not only did they end up making the honor roll for us marking period, they also apparently were struggling at some point, so most improved student, they also got them for perfect attendance for the marking period, if they're a club member, if they're an athlete. It's about building a whole school community. The other piece is random act of kindness with really, and our kids are really good with that. Last year, I think they, we collected about $5,000 in money and property that kids turned in that they found, $600 iPhones found in the hallway. Well, and the only thing they get for that is a big thank you and a sticker, okay? Now we added a T-shirt if you get like four times that that happens, so it is something that's part of our middle school community and very important to us. And then the rest of this is OM supplies, fees for the competitions, the other component is our agenda pads, and each student gets an agenda pad, which also has a student-parent handbook in it as well, printed materials for the winter and spring contract, and just in general, co-curricular activities and supplies. Next slide. Next slide. We're on to middle school rentals, where we, this is one area that went up a little bit from last year. Last year was seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. We're going up to nineteen-six because we are also now including in this line item the videotaping of commencement. We've always videotaped commencement. It just didn't come out of this line item before. We also rent the chairs that are on the high school football fields. Both the high school and the middle school split that. Copy machine rentals. We have three copy machines at the high school, I mean, at the middle school that need to be at full capacity. Water cooler rentals and storage container, one storage container rental. Okay, next slide. And we have library supplies, also flat funding, six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, periodicals, new books, educational subscription supplies. Our library is really the academic hub of the middle school. You know, you think of libraries as a quiet place. We have a lot of action going on. And our new librarian is very much a part of things. And it really is an academic center for our school. So that is something we're going to support. The kids also, still at the middle school age, have, with their language arts class, they have a library visitation schedule where they come and check out books. And yes, we're doing a lot with e-readers and everything else too, but sometimes it's good to have that paper book in front of you. And it's something that really does encourage what's going on. So there's a lot of new literature out there. So we like to stay current with that. Okay, next slide. I'm almost done, I promise. Rest will go much quickly because it's, we have middle school health office supplies, got to have your Band-Aids. You have different tissues of all things. And that stays flat funding from there. Okay, next slide. We have our eighth grade commencement programs. Okay? And that's twenty-four hundred dollars. We give out quite a bit of programs. So that's just a constant cost that we have. The middle school clean, repair, and maintenance supplies. That's something that over the years has evolved significantly. Middle school was in some pretty bad shape. We started to pump some more money into the middle school. We've also noticed that things, something such as easy as floor mats, which get quite expensive, does a lot to soak up the dirt from the inside and everything else. So that is an item that although it's flat fourteen, fifteen to fifteen, sixteen, it has gone up over the years and the middle school is definitely better for it. The other piece is repair of telephones, science supplies, music supplies, and classroom equipment. The telephones cost us a lot of money. Unfortunately, where our phones are installed are right by the doors to the classroom, which, am I, is that me? No. Okay. Right by the doors to the classroom, which happens to be the same height as a child's backpack that picks the phone that moves them. So we've been moving them and replacing them. Okay, and, all right. And that is just the overview of all the items that were in the budget itself. Okay? And as you go through this, our goal for is technology resources, which is something that is extremely important in the state and age. And Mr. Glock-Malloy and Dr. Zeigner will go into that next time. The concept of lifelong learning, not only for our kids to be lifelong learners, but for our faculty as well. And goals. Prepare all students for college and career readiness, focus on student learning, quality curriculum instruction and assessment, and up-to-date and relevant technological resources for our kids. Questions? Probably the most you'll ever hear me speak.
I really, I really like the sticker idea. I think that's a low, low-cost, high-yield.
I have one with all the stickers on it for me.
And T-shirts.
Well, Maslow talked about that. Any questions for the board, for Mr. Jacob? Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And this is a good segue into my presentation on the Finance and Infrastructure Strategic Action Plan. Way back, if you can remember, back in September, we asked the board to approve our 2014-15 goals. Okay? Included in those goals were goals pertaining to finance and infrastructure. And the goal that we had was to develop an efficient and fiscally responsible budget. As you heard and saw tonight by our two amazing principals, they went ahead and developed budgets based upon strong goals that they had for their schools, where they are asking us to provide their teachers with the tools that they'll need to achieve those strong academic and social and emotional goals that they have set for their students in their respective schools, while also maintaining fiscal responsibility. So kudos to Mrs. Jakubek and her staff, as well as to Mr. Brown and his staff. Our objective in accomplishing this goal is to increase new revenue. That includes transportation, advertising, and total revenue for facility usage, tuition, food services, and to decrease energy and utility expenditures. When you're looking at a budget, the last place you want to cut are the resources that we need to educate our students. And those resources come in two forms, human resources and those incredible supplies and materials, including the technological supplies that our faculty and staff members need to promote the learning that our kids will have to have once they graduate this year and growing into 2030. So some of the strategies that we put together into our action plan, and we've put some timelines, and our Board of Education also has resources as well as the personnel that will be responsible for accomplishing these steps. We'll begin with inventorying all forms of revenue generation for the district. Mr. DeAndrea and I, since I began in July, we've been taking a good, hard look at what are the current revenue sources that we have in the district and how can we possibly expand upon those sources, as well as identifying new forms of revenue. So we've been doing that. Another step is to work collaboratively with the Business Administrator and the Board of Education Finance and Infrastructure Committee to identify other potential revenue sources. Some of the things that we're looking at are advertising, tuition programs, even strategies that will decrease major expenditures such as energy. And we'll get to that next. Review and potentially revise BOE facility usage policies and temporary leasing rates. Last week, we asked our Board of Education to read for the first time a revised facility usage policy. Our Finance and Infrastructure Committee recently met and we discussed that, our new Financing Infrastructure Committee, met and discussed that policy and asked me to pull that this week or for this meeting so that we can take a closer look at the language we've used, so that we can get the policy written in a manner that we feel it'll be most effective. Once we go ahead and approve that for a second and final reading, then we'll ask our Board of Education to take a look at some new facility usage rates, a new philosophy toward leasing out our facilities. It's my belief that the cost for leasing out our facilities is far too high, and it acts as a deterrent for potential patrons that want to use our facilities. We would like, during different times of the year, to have people occupying our facilities, generating that revenue. We want people in our buildings during the summer, using our facilities to the maximum potential so that we can collect the maximum revenue and offset our taxpayers with that revenue that we collect. In doing so, we'll need to dialogue with the borough regarding the usage of facilities for community and recreation purposes. I recently met with Mr. Us and Mr. Plando, two people that lead our recreation services here in the borough. And we had a great conversation in which we clearly defined how we're going to work together with the community to use our facilities, but how also we're going to be able to use the facilities that aren't being used by our recreation department and maximize, again, that revenue generation. We also want to collaboratively investigate and implement a plan to generate print, field sign, website, and potentially bus advertising. Bus advertising is, is a direction that many districts are starting to take, depending on the advertising contracts that you can get with different organizations, including colleges. Many, many colleges, many, many hospitals are looking to advertise on buses. Obviously, we would need a policy in place so that it clearly defines, using the state guidelines that have been giving us, given to us by the Department of Education, the types of things that we can advertise on our buses, particularly institutions of higher learning and healthcare, both of which are paying great deals of money to school districts right now, not many, but at least a dozen right now, to advertise on buses using removable advertising signs. So that's an avenue we definitely want to explore. But also, we have plenty of athletic facilities. We have plenty of fields around our facilities that we can clearly put signs on to generate revenue. We have a number of different print sources that we can look to collect advertising revenue using. And finally, we have a website. We have a website that is growing in popularity. We have a Twitter page. We have a Facebook page, all of which directs people that like us and follow us back to our website. We have apps that can now take you to our website, that we can push out information. Advertising on our website is something, again, where we can clearly develop and generate great revenue. We also want to work collaboratively with the Business Administrator and the Directors of Transportation and Food Services to develop a plan to maximize revenue within those departments. You've heard Mrs. Jenkins talk. She just spoke to the board and the public on December 16th, talking about what she's done since September to take a look at the food we're providing to our students, how we can maximize participation in our lunch program. But furthermore, how we can maximize the use of our cafeteria services for outside catering services. That's a definite area that we want to explore in order to generate and grow revenue. With regard to transportation, we're very fortunate as a school district to have our own transportation department. Many school districts go ahead and sublease all their buses out, and they miss advertising revenue because of it. But more importantly, they miss the ability to generate revenue from those transportation services. Many school districts are looking for transportation services to take children to out-of-district schools, to transport their non-public students. We need to market for that business. We need to obtain that business. And we need to grow our transportation revenue. We also want to seek and apply for and obtain financial grants. There are tons of grants out there. It takes time, it takes energy, it takes focus. It takes direction in terms of where we want to go with some of those grant funds that are very restrictive in how you use them. But if we can find grant funding for technology, well, that's one piece that we no longer have to fund in our general budget. So we want to look for those opportunities. There are also endowments out there and donations that we can certainly solicit and try to obtain for our school district. As I said earlier, so that we don't take those resources away from our, our schools, we need to generate revenue. But we also then have to take a look at those major expenditures like energy and non-instructional materials and see how we can reduce the consumption of them. One of those ways we've already began, I happen to be someone that cares a lot about the carbon footprint that I leave on this earth. And I'd love our district to take a step forward and demonstrate how much we all care about keeping Sayerville, keeping New Jersey, keeping our country and our, and our world green, reducing our carbon footprint. It begins with the materials that we consume that we may not need to. So beginning this year, we went to a paper reduction initiative. We stopped putting out flyers in our schools. We started e-blasting, or we call them bomber blasting, or packing in our bomber backpacks, flyers and such. Our high school has an app that no others around have, that not only gives easy access to very important school and student information, but it pushes that information out to our parents. We want to harness the technology so that we can reduce consumption of paper and obviously reduce the cost of using paper. And it's not only the cost of paper, it's the cost on our copiers. More expensive than the paper is the materials that we need to copy paper. Those copying supplies are enormous. Those cartridges are expensive. Printer cartridges for individual printers alone are enormously expensive. By reducing paper, we reduce all that. Something that is on the agenda tonight, and this will make some of our parents happy, is a software called InfoSnap. And we're asking our board to approve a contract with this electronic software company that will allow our parents to register and re-register their students by going to a portal system where they log into it and all their data is there. All they've got to do is check to make sure it's accurate, and they're done. So parents, when you get that packet at the beginning of the year of thirty papers, cards to fill out and send back, no longer will you have to do that. You'll go into your child's portal page, click on a link, review all the information, including all of the policies and procedures that you need to check off, submit it, and you're done. Takes five minutes. It will also reduce the clerical work. Our secretaries, think of what they have to do. They get all that paper, they now have to manually input it one by one by one into our Power School student database. This information will be collected by InfoSnap and migrated over, did I use that word correctly, Eric? Thank you. Migrated over, after being polished, right, Eric? Into our Power School student database. A very important software that will have immediate impact on the paper we produce and the cost for producing it, as well as the clerical labor that will need to take place after that paperwork comes back. And not also to mention the postage in mailing out all those forms and packets to parents. And of course, that is that software, InfoSnap. We also want to explore the purchase and installation of solar panels. I know it's something that the district looked at years ago. And I know at the time, many districts swayed away from putting solar panels on because you had two options. Number one, you could have a power purchase agreement, and Mr. DeAndrea, jump in and help me if I need it here. Whereas, basically, you would agree to let somebody install the solar panels, but you would not own that energy or the S-Rex that come with that energy. Because at the time, if you cashed in those S-Rex, they could be worth a lot of money. Well, now those S-Rex or energy exchange coupons are worth nothing. However, there's still, there still are power purchase deals out there where we could have solar panels installed on our roofs, by the way, which have just been refurbished in most of our schools, and could see anywhere between thirty and fifty percent reductions in the amount of energy that we have to pay for because we will be producing energy. We also want to purchase and replace all lighting with energy-efficient fixtures. And I know that's something that's already been taking place, but we still have more work to go with regard to replacing those fixtures. We will save much in terms of energy expenses once we change all of those fixtures to energy-efficient ones. Look into upgrading all of our boiler systems. I think we're, we're pretty good with that too, correct? We still have a little ways to go. But finish that. Finish upgrading all of our boiler systems, once again, so we can be more efficient in the energy that we consume and pay for. We want to implement strategies district-wide to conserve electric, electric energy, gas... We want to implement strategies district-wide to conserve electric energy, gas, and oil. There are so many strategies that we can employ within our schools. We have a Green Classroom Committee, and that Green Classroom Committee is charged with the responsibility of educating our staff members and our students on how we can reduce energy consumption and reduce waste. Simple things as undocking a laptop, turning off a computer, unplugging it, turning off lights. Those are simple measures that if we get into a routine and a habit, can also save us a good percentage of money and reduce energy consumption. We want to also take a good, hard look at reducing transportation costs by implementing a three-tiered busing routing schedule. If you're not aware, right now, we have a two-tiered bus schedule, which causes a traffic nightmare on Washington Road, right, Louis? If you've ever been on Washington Road, which I think everybody here has been, while the middle school and high school is accepting or dismissing students, it can take you a good half an hour just to get into either school, because we are currently operating on a two-tiered busing system, which though also means that we have to use a greater fleet during those two tiers. As opposed to if you had a three-tiered system, you could begin with the middle school, I mean, the high school at 7:30, those buses drop those kids off, go get the middle school students, drop those kids off, go get the elementary school students, drop those kids off, and do the opposite in the afternoon for pickup. It would be a difference of starting 15 minutes earlier here in the high school and ending 15 minutes later at the elementary school. It will save us significantly in transportation costs. We talked about this previously. We have a very old elementary school in which our administration is using as its central office. We, as a Board of Education, have to decide what are we going to do with the Solover School. We've talked a lot about class size. We understand that we have a first grade right now that has very high student-to-teacher ratios. We can quickly fix that using some ergonomic strategies in those elementary schools, asking our board to employ two to three more elementary school teachers. But to truly solve the problem of class size that we're going to experience, particularly if the borough goes through with the second of the two housing projects, one of which is already underway, this is a dilemma that we're going to have to solve. One of the strategies could be to look into potentially building something by September Also, finally, and it should have been in the revenue generation portion of this presentation, but generating revenue from the development of tuition-based general and special education programs before, during, and after school and during the summer. The summer is a great opportunity for our school district to provide programming, tuition-based programming, where we can generate revenue. One of the things that we'd like to do is combine our summer enrichment program with our extended school year program, because by law, we have to provide an extended school year program, combine it and call it an integrated academic recreation camp, and try to get as many students involved in educational programming during the summer, which, by the way, will help us leaps and bounds in achievement. There's been a lot of discussion about increasing the school day, increasing the school year. One of the things that separates us from other countries that might be performing better than the United States is they have a longer school year. We have to start figuring out ways to engage our kids in education during that summer. Two and a half months is far too long. Creating programs during the summer to engage our kids in education will not only give us an opportunity to generate revenue, but it will give us the opportunity to educate them further, to promote greater achievement for them. That also being said, in your Board of Education agenda, there is also a motion asking you to approve a contract for NJ Care. That contract is so that we can utilize behaviorists, certified behaviorists from the Center for Autism Research. We need them to come into our district and take a good, hard look at our multiple disabilities program and our behavioral disabilities program. Those programs are good, but with the help of NJ Care, we can develop extremely strong programs that will do two things. Ensure that we keep Sayerville students in Sayerville as opposed to them going out of district to private out-of-district schools, where they'll never have the opportunity to be educated with typically developing peers, which they deserve and should have. But furthermore, we can develop programs in which we can attract students from other school districts to go to our programs on a tuition basis, and we can generate great revenue. We can't do that now because we need to develop those programs. We need NJ Care to help us develop those programs. Are there any questions, Board of Education members, on our Finance and Infrastructure Strategic Action Plan?
Mr. Sa.
Two things. First of all, you mentioned the ABA Care proposal. Is there a way, as part of the revenue generation piece, I know we're bringing in consultants for our cafeteria, we're bringing in consultants for multiple disabilities to help our programs here. There's also a lot of programs we have in the district that are running exceptionally well that were basically a best practice. Is there a way to utilize some of those programs and the people involved with them as a revenue generator for the district so that we can share our expertise for a fee and also put some additional money in our employees' pockets?
Absolutely. We're looking to market all of our programs for tuition students, but also, if we feel that we have a particular employee that can serve as a great resource to the districts, we definitely want to do that. It's great marketing for our district and, of course, great public relations.
Okay. And my second question goes back to the high school budget presentation, and this was before you had arrived here, but we had a high school strategic planning committee that was assembled that came up with a high school strategic plan. The group was very much engaged. They came here, I believe it was last April or May, presented the plan. And I heard that Mr. Brown is going in a different direction with a skip committee of some sort. I don't know if that's a subcommittee of the strategic planning committee or a completely different entity. I'm just concerned as to why we would transition out of what looked to be a committee that worked exceptionally well. And if you read the Middle States report from April of 11, the main thing that they cited as an opportunity for the high school was continuous and ongoing strategic planning. It was cited in numerous places throughout the report. Would you be able to come back to us at the next meeting and just review the current process that's in place and just assure that at least from a planning perspective, we've got the right process in place in order to successfully meet our Middle States obligations, which I believe is going to be in April of 16?
Yeah, and just so you know, too, with regard to the high school strategic action plan, I have met with several of the members that were part of that. They will actually be joining me at Tech Expo next Friday. But we took a look at some of the activities that were designated to take place this year. I believe that much of that strategic action plan has been accomplished. We're on the third year of that strategic action plan, and we purposely incorporated many of the activities in our Student Achievement Strategic Action Plan, because that strategic action plan primarily focused on student achievement. So those remaining activities were incorporated into the Student Achievement Strategic Action Plan, which we'll be presenting at a later Board of Education date.
So you're confident, then, when we have our Middle States evaluation, that the planning aspect will not be an issue for the Middle States accreditation team?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? I don't have any questions to comment. I like the passion, and I think this is what the Board of Ed wants you focused on, this end curriculum, so a good brief.
Thank you.
Want to press on with the rest of the agenda while you're up there? Very good. There you go. Everybody should have received these reports that are posted on the portal. Anybody have any questions, concerns about them? If not, also, the meeting minutes from the reorg meeting and executive session of January 6 will post it. Anybody have any questions, comments, additions to the minutes?
I make a motion to be approved.
I need a second.
Second.
And I need a vote.
Mr. Pinto.
Mr. Balka.
Yes.
Mrs. Backer.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Rosensky.
Yes.
Mr. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Pinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Student Council, if you could find out, we haven't had a student council representative since several meetings already. Either that's going to be a viable program or not, if you could find out why we have...
Absolutely.
And the county prosecutor sent two officers to discuss social media internet safety. And it was about 15 parents came, maybe 10 administrators and board members. And it was, I wish there were more parents there, but it was all received.
When's the next meeting?
The next meeting, the next PIC meeting is March 9th, and...
What's the topic?
What's the topic? We haven't finalized one. How's that?
Park, the park assessment?
No.
The park assessment will be discussed in February, and we're working to finalize the date on that.
And that'll be blasted out when we figure that out, the date?
Excuse me?
That'll be sent out?
Oh, absolutely.
What date of week is it usually? Is it used on Wednesday?
It's, the PIC meetings are usually on Monday, but I'm looking at a Tuesday evening for the park presentation.
Thank you. Highlights, Mr. Pinto?
The students of the Sampson Upper Elementary School were asked to write persuasive essays about charities they felt were deserving of the money collected on Halloween during the SUES change for a charity Halloween coin drive. The students then voted for the charity they felt was most deserving during their technology classes. In order to raise money for these special causes, willing teachers dressed up on Halloween, and the students voted for the teacher they felt had the best costume using loose change they collected over the past few weeks. The collected change, which totaled over $200, will be donated to Summit Annual Rescue, the charity chosen by the students. Congratulations to Mrs. Leonard, who was chosen by the students for best costume. On Thursday, November 27, the Sayerville Middle School Chorus performed as part of the youth choir in the 6 ABC Dunkin' Donuts Thanksgiving Day Parade. The students rehearsed the music and learned the choreography at school with their director, Marie Malara, and then joined students from five states to perform live on the stairs of the Philadelphia Art Museum. In addition to several other songs, the middle school chorus sang and performed choreography to "Let It Go" along with 900 young adults and soloist Candace Glover, winner of the American Idol. Forty-five members of the Sayerville Middle School Chorus, their director, Marie Malara, and several chaperones traveled to Philadelphia, wherein, in addition to rehearsals and the performance, the group found time to tour the birthplace of our nation, discover science at the Franklin Institute, and enjoy a performance of Cinderella. The trip was a huge success, and our talented youth choir's performance of Cinderella, the trip was, oh, sorry, the trip was a huge success, and our talented youth choir's performance with Candace Glover can be seen in a youth tube length. Great things are happening in Sayerville.
Thank you, Mr. Pinto. Dr. Labbe, your report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mackenon. If I can direct our Board of Education members to Vision 2030 Finance and Infrastructure. Items number 13 through 16, we have the approval of some tuition contracts. Just for clarification purposes, those are contracts for students that are currently, unfortunately, homeless and living in Denville. However, Sayerville is considered their district of residence, so we are responsible fiscally for their education. Number 17, approval of the amended contract with the Carr Rubino Architects for roof replacement. Number 18, approval to amend the 2015 Sayerville Board of Education meeting dates. In this particular case, we're going to remove April 14 and add April 21. We felt because of our spring break there, we needed a little bit of a buffer. And in fact, it turns out that will allow us to continue with the third Tuesday of the month if we do that. So in this particular case, I believe March 3rd, I mean, March...
April?
Was it March 30th? March 30th will actually be our workshop meeting, and April 21st will be our business meeting. You can find that on page four. Number 19, which is also on page four, it's approval of professional services agreement with NJ Care, the Center for Autism Research, which I mentioned earlier in my strategic action plan presentation. Number 20 and 21, that contract with InfoSnap, the electronic registration software system, that can be found on page four as well. Number 25, approval of Sayerville Middle School cheerleading competition costs. Number 26, approval of student trips with transportation on page five. And finally, on page six, approval of one out-of-district placement tuition and bedside tutoring for two students with disabilities. Any question on finance and infrastructure? Yes, Mrs. Bloom?
Is the InfoSnap going to be an ongoing cost or a one-time charge?
It'll be a yearly cost. They are going to push this year's cost, because we'd like to start this with kindergarten registration. And I might also add that one of the goals for the district is to centralize our registration through the use of this software. Right now, when children register for our school district, they go to the individual schools. In a district this size, we really should have a central registration with a registrar. This system will allow us to, beginning with, hopefully this year, if you go ahead and approve this, kindergarten registration in March. Any other questions?
I don't remember anything I'm going to abstain on.
Okay. Mr. Sa.
DeAndrea?
Bless you.
Bless you. Mr. DeAndrea, I need to abstain on Premier Printing Solutions.
If I can now direct your attention to Vision 2030 Student Achievement. Number one, we're asking our Board of Education to approve revisions to the 2015-16 calendar. As you, if you were here at our last meeting, you would have known that in the current SEA contract, it states that there must be two professional development days. Therefore, we went back and we added those two professional development days to the beginning of the year. By doing so, we had to take the professional development meeting that we had scheduled for Martin Luther King Day. We had to move that to September 2nd, and then we had to add one more day to the end of the year. So previously, the last student day was going to be the 20th, and the last staff day would be the 21st. Now, the last student day will be the 21st of June, and the last teacher day will be Number two can be found on page seven, is participation of the middle school and high school students in the 2014-15 Middlesex County Arts Middle and High School Program. We're very excited about that. We're very happy for those students that were selected. Number three, which can be found on page eight and nine, is our standard HIB report for the month and the recommendations for actions that go with those. Number five, which can be found on page nine, is approval of an advanced placement course. It's called Advanced Placement Environmental Science, something we're really excited about. Dr. Shettyak worked with Mrs. Gashinsky on that, and we thank them very, very much for giving our students an opportunity to take another advanced course in science, something that I think we all agree was necessary. Number eight, approval of new books to be used in the Sayerville Middle School Language Arts Program. Numbers nine through 16, co-curricular activities, including but not limited to the AP night or freshman orientation on Wednesday, February 11, from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m. in this very cafeteria. You can find that on page 11. Any questions on student achievement?
Questions?
Just a comment, I need to abstain on the Arts and Education Center. I'm on the Board of Trustees of that organization. And also, I also want to commend the Science Department and Mrs. Gashinsky on the addition of the course. I think it's a course that not only is extremely relevant, given the title and the content, but also how we went about implementing the course and identifying that we had a gap for students who basically were looking for another science to take and were not interested in the physics or earth science, and I think this will fulfill a need. So, great job.
You guys rock.
Mrs. Bloom?
The, on the calendar, the last two dates still state 20 and 21, so we should change it to 21 and 22.
Oh, in the box? We'll amend that. Thank you.
Down the bottom.
You're not in the box. You're talking about...
On the bottom.
In the narrative.
In June.
In the middle.
Right, and that's...
It's supposed to be 20...
It doesn't...
It's supposed to be 21 and 2.
The narrative doesn't coincide with the box.
Oh, okay, you're right, okay. Darn. This calendar drives me nuts. Will this go in my evaluation? Any more questions? In governance, we're going to ask our Board of Education to approve the local wellness and nutrition, health examinations, and technology policies and regulations that were revised for a second and final reading. As I mentioned earlier, we pulled back the facility usage policy so that our finance and infrastructure committee can take another look at it. So, we'll be talking about that at our next Governance Committee meeting, too, as well.
Any board members have any questions or concerns about any of those policies?
The only question I have, you know, it's really for Mr. Balka, as chair of the Finance Committee. What was the concern? Because I thought we had crafted the policy basically in line with what the Finance Committee had wanted. What was the disconnect?
There was this concern, it was saying, giving certain groups, right in paper, complete access to schools with no charges and stuff like that, and then other things could sneak in that way. So, we just want to take a better look at it, take another look at it, and make sure we're wording everything right and, you know...
Yeah, it was a narrative that dealt with the recreation...
Recreation and some...
They kind of made it, policies should clarify, this is what I think they, you know, the policy should clarify things. That kind of muddies it a little bit. I think it needs to be reworded. And that was the issue.
Okay.
It's too much ambiguity, I think.
Well, I mean, basically, the policy just said that we would give, you know, free usage of the schools to any program under the sponsorship of the Rec Department. Was that the concern, that you didn't want to...
And now the Rec Department's encumbering other non...
Too general?
Yeah, too general. And the Rec Department could go out and reach out to other non-borough entities, like travel teams and stuff like that, that aren't really necessary for the borough and starting using our facilities for free. So, we want to make sure we don't, that door doesn't open.
That hurts our revenue stream.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay, great. Any more questions on governance? Okay, if I can direct your attention now to Vision 2030 Personnel. And of course, we have several retirements. And as we have been doing, I'd like to read a couple of statements about some of the fine staff members that will be retiring, including Mrs. McAvoy, who we announced during our last meeting, but also Maureen Grossman, Secretary to the Principal at the Wilson Elementary School, Mary Ellen Hen, a paraprofessional at the Arleth Elementary School, and Patricia Crisafi, a cafeteria worker at the Arleth Elementary School. So, beginning with Mrs. McAvoy, Mary McAvoy has served the Sayerville Public Schools for the past 10 years as an occupational therapist for Project Before Eisenhower and the Samson Upper Elementary Schools. During her decade of service, Ms. McAvoy emerged as a dedicated and vital member of our therapeutic delivery team. More specifically, Ms. McAvoy's child-centered approach made her special to many of our children, and they fondly refer to her as Ms. Mac. Remarkably, Ms. McAvoy extended her service delivery without hesitation to the many parents and guardians that she worked with, constantly fostering a home-school connection so that her children's great gains would ultimately transfer to the student's natural environment. Her warmth and positive relationship with all stakeholders will be sadly missed. Congratulations, Mrs. McAvoy. Patricia Crisafi has been employed as a long-term cafeteria worker for the Sayerville School District since 1989. She started working in Eisenhower Elementary School in the kitchen and is presently working at the Arleth Elementary School in the same capacity. Pat is a dedicated worker with a great work ethic and has maintained that work ethic through her 26 years of employment for the Food Service Department here in Sayerville. She has established an excellent rapport with her fellow coworkers, faculty, and staff at the Arleth School, as well as the other schools in our district. Her friendly demeanor always shines through as she serves meals to the students and staff on a daily basis. Pat is an exemplary employee who has truly been an asset to our Food Services Department in our district. We wish her all the best in her upcoming retirement at the end of the school year. Maureen Grossman is Secretary to the Principal at the Wilson Elementary School. Not only has she been a resident of the Sayerville community for 30 years, she has also been a valuable asset and member of the Sayerville Public School District for approximately 21 years. Her professional career began at the high school level, where she served as secretary for approximately two years. Mrs. Grossman continued her employment as a secretary for the remainder of her career at the Wilson Elementary School. During her career, Maureen has had the pleasure of working alongside four principals. She has been noted for her polished skill set, commitment to education, and her contagious laughter. Teachers, support staff, and parents and students will all recognize Mrs. Grossman affectionately called "Moe" as she will be leaving behind something special that can never be replaced. We will miss her dearly and wish her well as she begins another exciting chapter in her life. Thank you for your service, Mrs. Grossman. After more than 26 years in the Sayerville School District, Mary Ellen Hen, a dedicated paraprofessional who has touched the lives of so many students, has decided to retire in order to spend more time with her family. Ellen has lived in Sayerville since she was eight years old. She is a proud graduate of Sayerville War Memorial High School, as are her three sons. When volunteering at her son's PTA, Ellen learned of the job opening as a paraprofessional and thought it would be a perfect opportunity to work with children, something that she had always wanted to do. Ellen began working at Project Before at the Eisenhower Elementary School and has worked with various grade levels in the Wilson School and the Sayerville Middle School. She has been at Arleth for more than 16 years. She is a nurturing, caring, loving, patient, supportive, dedicated, and kind-hearted person who has worked tirelessly with many special needs students that will be forever grateful for the impact she has made on their lives. Ellen has always encouraged and guided every student to strive for their best, no matter what the circumstances. Ellen has always gone above and beyond for her students and her coworkers. She is certified in CPR and was a member of the Sayerville Community Emergency Response Team. She is also on Arleth's Emergency Response Team. In fact, in 2011, Ellen was honored as Arleth Educational Support Person of the Year. Sayerville will be losing one of the most compassionate, dedicated professionals who is truly an inspiration to all. Congratulations, Mary Ellen. Along with that, numbers four through five, we do have, we are asking our Board to accept some resignations. One is for an art advisor position, and the other is for a Spanish teacher at the Eisenhower Elementary School. That can be found on pages 12 and 13. Number 17, we're asking you to rescind an appointment for an assistant softball coach. You can find that on page 13. Number eight, we're asking you to approve several leaves of absence. You can find that on pages 13 through 14. Items number nine through 13, we're asking you to approve several co-curricular advisors or co-advisors, coaching aides, and some Title I tutors at the Samson Upper Elementary School. And that can be found on pages 14 and 15. Items number 14 and 15, which also can be found on pages 14 and 15, we're asking you to approve some non-certified and certified staff members. Oh, there's a typo there for number 14 and 15. Sorry about that. Number 16 and 17, we're asking you to approve some certified, non-certified substitutes. Number 18, we're asking you to approve some curriculum writers, and that can be found on page 17. And finally, we have some professional days and conferences that we're asking you to approve on pages 17 through 19.
Any questions from the Board before I open up the public?
Yeah, Mr. DeAndre, on page 14, Alexis Poplowski I'll be abstaining on.
Anybody else? Mrs. Bakker?
Mr. DeAndre, the canceled prior years reconciling items for $1,600, what is that for?
That's added to cafeteria service that came up while the auditors were in. There were a variety of items, returned items, bank hours, check charges, and things of that nature.
Okay, so it wasn't like checks that weren't cashed, or?
No, no.
No, no.
Those are all, the unfortunate part is with some of those items, because of the volume of small amounts that used to go through the cafeteria, someone may give a check, it bounced, and then it redeposits, but the trail isn't there. So, it's a combination of the different things that accumulated over the years.
All right, it says prior years. How many years is that?
I could tell you probably two or three years that they, that it's accumulated. So, we're looking, with the auditor's recommend, it wasn't an audit recommendation, but they recommended we clean it up.
Do we do this every two to three years, or?
We should, we're going to start looking at it.
Because I don't ever remember seeing it before.
No, we've never done it with the cafeteria. We've always done it with the operating account, payroll account, so that's why they recommend it.
Any other questions from the Board?
Emilio, we have Robert Cochran getting appointed as Winter Color Guard Assistant for 4185. We also paid him $1,400 on his bill list for being a band instructor. Is that going to create a W-9 1099 issue come the end of the year?
I would have to look into that. I wasn't aware that he would...
I just happen to, you know...
I wasn't aware of it, but I'm assuming that one is done more as a consultant basis with, and I probably wasn't aware that he was employed, or when they hired him as a drill instructor, anyone aware of it.
Any other questions? If not, this time, I'll open up the public for any questions or comments on agenda items only. I will open up for the public again for any business that may come before this. For agenda items only, anybody have any questions, comments? Please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Charlene Chuneman. It's Bruce Lane. This is weird, I haven't been here in a while on the wall of study. I have a question for Dr. Labby. With all the recent studies that have come out showing that school times should be starting later, and New Jersey, I think they're doing a study, looking to legislate actually, not starting schools before 8:30, why would we want to move our high school even earlier?
Yeah, the research that you're citing is brain-based research. And there is, there is research out there that according to how the brain works, it is more advantageous for a teenager and an adolescent, which would be a middle school student, to start their school day later. However, in the districts that have gone about and made a change such as that, there has been no published research to support that there is any significant change to student achievement in those districts that have implemented that type of change. So, our school district is mindful of the brain-based research that's being conducted. However, you know, starting our students 15 minutes earlier, I don't think will bring on a great hardship for them. We also have to look at other things. Many of our students participate in extracurricular activities after school, athletic programs after school. That would wreak a great deal of havoc on those programs if they were to start later because we would have those kids start school later. You also have to factor into consideration many of our students that don't participate in extracurricular activities leave school to go to work. And that would seriously impact their ability to find employment. Something else to consider is the fact that many of our parents of elementary school students, because we would start them earlier, would be forced to provide more or greater hours of daycare because their children would be getting out of school far earlier and would not have any supervision. Our elementary school students would be then getting out at 2:15, 2:30. And some of our elementary school parents might find that to be a great hardship. So, we are mindful of the research. We haven't found any statistical data to support greater achievement, and we don't want to rush into a decision like that before we can answer some of those questions like, what will our kids at the high school do after school, and what will our parents of elementary school students do to provide supervision for their kids if they're getting out of school earlier?
Okay, well, I do believe there is a before and after-school care program. I personally didn't have, I don't have to have my child home. I would put mine in a before and after school care if I needed that. I thought the purpose of our schools was to promote academics. And from the studies that I've seen, teenagers learn better later. I think you can talk to most first-period teachers, and they'll tell you their kids are asleep in class. I'm not arguing to start school later. That is not a fight I really want to take on right now. But going earlier, to me, is a huge step in the wrong direction, especially with our teenagers. You have a morale problem at the high school. I've heard that over and over again. Morale is low, morale is low. There were so many issues at the high school this year. I have a high schooler. If you tell him now he's going to start 15 minutes earlier, and this calendar, which I'm assuming after you vote tonight is approved, it was up as approved on the website already, so I'm assuming that it will be approved tonight. Now, we're going to say, you're starting before Labor Day, which you haven't done in 12 years since you've been going to Sayerville schools, and you're starting 15 minutes earlier every day. That's not something that most teenagers I know want to hear. I don't know any parents either, honestly, that would be thrilled with that either. Quick poll, when you said that, I said, jumped right on and said, oh, 15 minutes earlier. I don't know anybody who would say that's a great idea for their teenagers. We struggle to get them to school for 7:45. So, I just think that's a huge step in the wrong direction. I'm curious as to the Board. I know, Dr. Labby, you spoke at the PTO meeting about why the calendar needs to be the way it is. Does anybody on the Board have a reason why we're starting before Labor Day with the children this year? I know when this had happened in the past, we started the teachers Wednesday and Thursday, I think, and then gave them Friday off, or they came Wednesday, Thursday. I've never seen the kids start before Labor Day.
Well, I think it's the way the calendar fell this year. And if you take those two days away in September, then you just add them in June. And now, you're looking at June 24th, and if you have snow days, then we've got a problem.
Well, this year, we end on June 22nd.
Right.
Okay, and we have, that leaves us five days if we needed them, and we have two built-in. If we start after Labor Day, we would end on June 23rd next year, which would only leave us four days, but we would have three built-in. So, unless we had a huge problem with the calendar this year, I don't see why we're drastically changing things next year. That's a huge vacation week for so many people. I know it's been said, well, you don't have to send your kids to school when there's the calendar. I would be hard-pressed to pull my child out for the first two days of school. That, to me, is a bad time to pull a child out of school.
That's why we try to put these out as advanced notices we can, for those type of things.
This is very early this year. And I have not seen any other districts. I work in East Brunswick. I'm very curious to see their calendar. They also build in three snow days. But I haven't seen it yet. They haven't done theirs yet.
If I could add, many, many school districts in Middlesex County are doing the same thing.
Okay, I was just curious if there was a reasoning that we were suddenly changing after this long?
I think it's just the way the calendar fell this year, the way the dates are when Labor Day happens to be. Labor Day's pretty late.
So, it's...
It's a 70.
And there's, but there's still no reason that the kids have to go early. There's no specific reason that we couldn't do it like we've done in years past where the kids go back on Tuesday after Labor Day?
No, I think it was a conscious decision to try. I think it's always good to try to get out as June, because then in June comes, we hear it's too hot, the kids don't learn, it's not productive. You know, so it's depending on which side you fall on.
Hot before Labor Day, too. Unfortunately, we don't have air in our schools. They're going to be hot at some point.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion this time, and we get back to the agenda. 2030 Finance, I'm struck, Dan, anything you want to add?
We had a committee meeting last Tuesday. On the building cleanliness side, it was reported to us that the middle school has improved, but Eisenhower had a little setback because of a vacancy. And they complained to the staff for work performed during the winter breaks. And on capitalist projects, the bid opening, well, the bid documents for the high school roof should be done shortly, and bid opening is aiming for the end of February. The Truman roof replacement, there's a lack of response from the contractor on punchless items, and Dennis is going to keep on top of that. And as far as Arleth mechanical upgrades go, they're completed, and there's contingencies left in the contract that were not used. So, they're going to use the contingencies to buy some additional controls and control more of the building. And some of the work will be completed by our people and staff. The end cost is going to be no additional cost to the contractor, just taking the money out of contingency, putting it towards more controls. On the finance side, we spoke, we met with Mrs. Jenkins, and we went over the nutrition report we got briefly. She spoke on some of the, some of the suggestions that, you know, she was going to implement and see if it makes a difference. I requested the numbers from September through December 2013 to September, December 2014 to see how it looks with the, just in the high school, just to see how the numbers look with the full-time seniors now. And there's a decent increase in the number of days at a quick glance, but there's some little issues here with like, for some reason, the month of November, there's an increase in meals served, but a decrease in revenue. So, I'm... an increase in meals served, but the decrease in revenue, so I'm gonna talk, we need to talk to Emilio and see what could cause that. And then like in December fourteen to December thirteen, the sales per day is down, which doesn't make sense either, so.
What months?
In December, comparing it.
Less days, yeah, because we're a week off.
I, I'm saying the sales per day.
Oh, per day.
So, it's, so there's some issues we gotta take a further look into.
Anomalies.
Anomalies, yes. But two out of the four months that we looked at had anomalies, so it's, it's a concern, you know?
Yeah, it's worth, interesting to find out.
It's, it's only a matter of time before taxes are gonna have to fund cafeteria, so we gotta make sure we can take any changes now, we can to make, you know, get them in the black soon or rather later.
You know my solution.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, Verizon, there was an issue with their, back when we switched from Verizon to Voice Over IP, and it looks like we owe them some money, so one item's on the bill list now, there's gonna be another item of like two to
That's been ongoing.
Two to three grand, and that should be the end of that. We talked about the registration software package that Dr. Labby discussed, and that's pretty much it.
Very good. Anybody, any questions for Dan? I'm seeing none, um, student achievement, we haven't met since the last meeting, right? We discussed that the last meeting, student achievement. Policy?
Uh, no, other than the policies that are on the agenda for today.
And personnel at the meeting today, anything?
Yeah, we met earlier today, uh, we just went over a few fourteen, fifteen, uh, staff contracts, for certified and non-certified, as well as a revision to the, uh, replacement teacher contract, and we also talked about implementing a staff, culture, and climate survey.
Okay, so at this time, I'll take a motion to accept and file a superintendent's report. So moved? Need a second?
Second.
Any roll call?
The second was Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Val.
Yes.
Mrs. Backer.
Yes.
Mrs. Blum.
Yes.
Mr. Brzinski.
Yes.
Mr. Syak.
Yes, with the two abstentions noted.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Syak, anything on the New Jersey School Board's?
Uh, Wednesday, March fourth, is our county student recognition dinner. We'll be honoring two students from Sayerville High School. Uh, I haven't gotten the names yet, but I know they're forthcoming. Also, February seventh, there is a leadership training program for presidents, vice presidents, and those aspiring to the, uh, position. Uh, that will be held at the Marriott Forestal, and, uh, you can register for that, it's a one-day program.
When is the student recognition?
Wednesday, March fourth, it's the first, uh,
Where's that at?
Wednesday in March, New Brunswick High School.
If you can send the reminder email out when you get to, you know.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm seeing a special committee reports discussion, the only thing I haven't discussed and I wanted to mention, and I, uh, I failed to at last meeting and I wanted to, was, um, I, I went through the audit report, I don't know if everybody got to see it, um, and I, I just wanted to point out, um, you know, that there's two very minor comments in there, and I, I felt after I read them and read the whole report that those are things because we have to put something in there, and they're more procedural than anything else. I just wanted to mention in public, Mrs. DeAndre, that, uh, considering the size of the budget, the size of the district, six thousand twenty students, over eight hundred staff, eight buildings, the amount of purchase orders that go in and out, count receivable, count payable, the number of staff members you have, I think it's commendable, again, to, to get an audit report that basically, as far as I'm concerned, is clean, and, and it's been that way
Thank you, Mrs. Backer.
Since I've been on the board, um, you know, nothing that, of any concern, and I think anything from a board member's perspective, um, there's a lot that goes on in, in your area and what you do, and to know that it's, it's being, uh, well-managed is, is something of relief, uh, from that aspect. So I'd like you to extend, uh, those comments to your staff
We definitely pass them on.
You know, that it's, I know it's, it's not a less glamorous job, um, in what they do, but they do it well, and if you can just pass that on to them, I appreciate it. Anybody else, anything, anybody else have anything else to discuss before I open up the public? Seeing none at this time, I'd like to open up the public for any business that may come before the board. Seeing no, oh, Mr. Santiago.
There we go.
Just joking.
Well, then, we're starting out very nice. Louis Santiago, twenty-three, Astor Court, Sayerville, New Jersey. I just wanted to point something out that was not offensive only to me, but to everybody here in the district and the athletics program. Um, a few weeks ago, the Sayerville wrestling team had defeated the Bishop R. High School Trojans in a wrestling match, and after which proceeded to have a photo posted on social media with a quote, "After the Sayerville match, finger emoji," which is a icon in picture, and this symbol emoji. Hashtag, "They stuck it to us," hashtag, "Lights out," hashtag, "Howling." This was posted on the internet jabbing not only at us, but everybody to deal with Sayerville in its entirety. And I brought it up to administration, but I'd like to also bring it up to all of you to recognize the, I wouldn't say, I guess, beating up that a lot of us have to do with social media from other outside people that have nothing to do with anything, and I find that completely inappropriate at any age or any school district to be posting anything like that, and I just wanted to tell you that it's very offensive to me, and it's wrong to be doing that ever to anybody, no matter what happens. Um, also, the student council representative part, um, I've had discussions with the person, I won't mention names, um, I think that we should probably, being the fact that we haven't had anybody here, probably change it, and I'd be willing to take place for that in student representation, because obviously, we're not getting very far right now, and clearly demonstrating over the few, couple of months that I had been coming here, clearly I understand what's going on within the stool and what, you know, we can do, and different types of things that student council represents, because, you know, they do speak for the students, and I do get a lot of, you know, in, inside stuff that, you know, that may need to get brought up, so I would just like to throw that out there, and I would really appreciate it, because I just wanted to show you, you know, how much I really do care about, you know, everybody in its entirety. Um, what else? Um, oh, yes, I'd like to really, really, really reiterate the disaster of a parking lot at the end of the day, and how much traffic it is getting out of here. Not only do I think that we need a three-tiered, I think we need to have a police officer out there every single day, and to make sure that parents aren't parking in the fire lane behind a car. I have to be at work at Chipotle in East Brunswick by three o'clock when we got out of here at two-thirty. I literally have to have my bags packed, and as soon as I come out there, there's a line of cars parked in front of the cars in a fire lane. I witnessed some elderly man, somebody was parked in a handicap spot, which shouldn't be parked there, and an elderly man who needed the spot came over and started using explicit language and shaking his cane out the window and saying how he was offending the handicap for parking in there. And then another day, I witnessed somebody smash into somebody because they were parked behind their car, and it is complete and utter chaos and gridlock at the end of the day, where you can't even get left, you can't go right, you can't get any direction, and then not only is it difficult to get left, it's because both directions don't stop and they do not let you out, and it's just god-awful getting out of here at the end of the day. And there just needs to be something to be redone, to replan everything, and it's just, it, the pattern is god-awful, and it's just, I don't even know how this is even possible. God forbid there was an emergency, and we needed to get a fire truck and an ambulance, you wouldn't be able to get in there because people are blocking, A, the fire lanes, and B, you can't move anywhere. So I just wanted to just say that this needs to get looked into very, very soon, and it's not just something that is gonna take two seconds to fix. Um, also, I just wanted to say that I think that there should be, uh, even though we don't have the matinees for the theater society, the, it's, really does help with ticket sales, and it helps get it out there, because it really isn't very much that, you know, anybody gets a word of it, and I understand, you know, that a decision is made, but I just think that there needs to be something else that, or something that we could try to do to get it out there, because we're having these, those three grades come down and see it, is, really does help, because we've, I've looked at the ticket sales and the numbers and everything, and it really has fallen dramatically, and just, it, there's a lot of work put into it, and a lot of other things get more credit, and I think it should be balanced for everybody equally. Um, but other than that, uh, I just wanted to point those few things out, and hopefully can get those things looked into, and, uh, also, um, on the, um, excuse me, district highlights, um, there are things that are mentioned on there that I think that should also, uh, that are good that are mentioned on there, but there are other things on there that people aren't getting recognized for, so if we could look kind of more into different things that, you know, not just two things, because I'm pretty sure there's plenty more, like, for example, getting a senator coming to your school is kind of important, I would believe, but, um, I guess not. Um, but, uh, other than that, uh, I think that is all for me, so, uh.
Mr. Santiago, I, I appreciate you coming up and, and talking to us, a couple of, I don't know where this starts, I'll just go out there. All right. Um, first of all, as far as the student council representative, that's appointed by the student council, that's an elected position, so you have to go, um, deal with those folks, if they reappoint you, however that works, that's not something the board, we don't select people Yeah, 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 that I understand. Those are people that you, I, I know you're an advocate of, of government and civics, and that's something that you have to go work with, uh, with your peers on that one. Um, if you do sit here, I'd say, well, you're here anyway, so, uh, that'd be good. Um, I, I know your heart's in the right place, and, and, and you love the school district, and I, I believe that, and I believe that's sincere, but in the future, when you come to these meetings, I want you to start with one positive thing about the district, and then you can tell us the other things you'd like to see improved. The traffic situation has been something that's been a problem, uh, for, you know, for the last thirty years, um, and, and I, I think it stems, it's, it's a municipal problem, we understand, but I think it stems from planning years ago, where somebody thought it was a good idea to put a middle school, a high school, and then a elementary school, a shopping center, a library on a two-lane road. Um, you know, that's gonna be a problem, uh, it's always gonna be a problem, and it's, my kids dealt with it, um, you know, that's why we need more, um, The, the, the Main Street, Washington Road cut-throughs, you know, to alleviate some of that congestion. So, um, I, I understand some of your concerns, as far as the highlights are concerned, that comes from principals, that something happens, um, in their building that they want to be brought up at the Board of Education, that's not something the board picks and chooses what we wanna talk about, that input that comes in, um, from the building principals about what's happening, because obviously, uh, we don't know everything that's going on in every building, um, and, and due to, due to the limited amount of time in meetings, um, we've asked them to select them, so we try to pick different schools on different days and different things that happen. So if there's something that you, happens, like, like the senator coming, that's something you may wanna, again, go through the student council, to Mr. Brown, say, hey, that's something I'd like to see on the board highlights, and then we'd be more happy to read about. Yeah, definitely. It's not that we're, you know, picking and choosing or not Yeah, 'cause I, yeah, I was asking, 'cause I did see just, it's been Sure. Kind of just two places, that's why I think that there's things that are going on in different schools that should get recognized, not just, not just, you know, my little, you know, Twitter thing with Cory Booker, but I just mean like overall, because I mean, there's different things, I mean, we do great things. Well, I, look, I'm, I'm with you, and Yeah, definitely. And the other thing that you mentioned at the beginning, I don't speak the hashtag language, so you lost me in about ten seconds of that. But I'm, but I assume that this was posted by our adversary that we competed with, and those things that if they're offensive and out of line, there's an appeal process through the NJ SSIA, I think it is, that can look at that, and you can, if a complaint could be filed to the athletic director or the principal for something that's that out of line. I, I don't know what it was, um, you know, and see, but if it's something like that, there's channels for that, things to be addressed.
The reason why I mention that is because we had this happen through Twitter again, uh, yet again, in the summer, about a track meet, and they wrote, I remember, I recall this, a written apology, apologizing to everybody in the Board of Education, and I believe it was about a page long, so I just wanted to bring up that this is not just something that, you know, I don't wanna just pass by, I want something to actually shed some light on, you know, what we have to really deal with.
Well, we're looking at it from our perspective, but you need to understand that this is one of the downsides of, of social media.
I'm, unfortunately.
And, and I don't get offended by it, 'cause I don't read it, and I think that's the, the best protection from that kinda stuff, so, but I appreciate your comments as always.
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to, you know,
Thank you.
Shed a little bit of light out.
Anybody else in the public like to speak about anything that may come before this board? Ma'am, you want Chip, please, come on up.
Oh, my gosh. She's smiling, so this'll be good. I'm a former bomber mom, my name is Mary Lardieri. My daughter graduated last year, Natalie. Natalie was a Sayerville bomber cheerleader, and I just wanted to let, let you know, I was, I was really happy to hear that the football program was reinstated. I was always happy with the district, I was always very happy and satisfied with teachers and wonderful administrators, and I never, I never had an issue with the, the school was, the high school was wonderful, wonderful memories, and I just wanted to tell you, keep, and to leave it in a positive note, that, and this is, I had to bring a picture of my daughter. My daughter attends William Patterson University, and even though she's, um, uh, what you would call her, um, a Willie P. Bear, she'll always be a bomber. I just wanted to, thank you.